Good morning. This is the time that was noticed and posted for our regular board meeting. It's Tuesday, May the 9th, 2023. It's 10 o'clock a.m. and we're in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room. Melody Lane Bisby, any item on this agenda could be open for discussion and possible action. And if you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where wishes stands on the mission undergone individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at this meeting, and the Board may vote to recess into executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the Board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3. And we begin with the roll call. District 1?
Morning, Madam Chair Crosby, sir.
Uh, District 2 Supervisor English is present. District 3?
Supervisor Judd is here.
We have a complete board this morning. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or by phone by calling 602-609-7513 or 888-680-6714. Conference ID 178190157 pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. The Board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on this agenda. To speak on an agenda item or during the call to the public, please complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the board prior to the start of the meeting. Notice that some attachments may be updated after the agenda is published, and that means that some presentation materials displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. And we begin with the call to the public. And I have a list here in the order in which they were submitted. And let's see how many of them are in person. Very, so the first three will be Alfred Kern. If you come to the podium, give a microphone. Uh, the next will be Joanne Murphy. And then Radford Hyde. I don't need to tell you, you have three minutes.
All right. Hi, well, I'm sure everybody knows my name's Alfred Kern. I live at 3460 East Green Washington, Douglas, Arizona. And it, I've been coming for over a year since last February. Uh, nothing has been done. I don't know if you people don't pay attention to me or we're, everybody here is here to speak and you're here to listen. So. I, I can do to get you to do part of your job, which is to come out and evaluate the roads. You know, um, we have roads that are being graded. There's no homes on them. We have over 30 homes on our road. And it hasn't been touched. I don't know what the problem is, but whatever the problem is, get over it.
We got this more interesting.
We, we, uh, like I said, we've had 30 homes back here. Everybody's paying taxes and nothing is getting done. Uh, I don't know what, what else to say. You know, I know, I know I've spoken enough that at some point or another that you've heard me. So, and, uh, and, and I, I've been talking to you since you've gotten into office. You know, it's, it's not a secret. I talk to you just about every year at the county fair. Nothing gets done. You're like, you're like the people, I used to work at the prison as a correction officer. And these kids that started working there, they wanted to get paid, but they didn't want to do anything. They wanted somebody else to do their job for them. You're getting paid. Start doing your work. Doing your job. We would appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I have.
And next speaker is Joanne Murphy on Teams. Joanne, are you there? Joanne Murphy on Teams, are you there? Okay, next is, um, Radford Hyde on Teams. Are you there, Radford?
Hi, good morning.
Yes.
Hi, I am speaking. Thank you. This is Radford Hyde from Sierra Vista. I have some comments regarding the voting for the jail tax. And in my opinion, this is what is being allowed to happen. Actually, this is not my opinion. This is what is being allowed to happen. Ready? Fire! Aim. A quarter of a billion dollars is what people want to raise before they even have a plan. It's remarkable and sad that people who have no idea how to implement civil engineering or architectural construction projects are voting on this and are pushing for voting on this. How about we do this? Tax first and then ask questions later. Where are all the questions prior to the decision to go forward with this? This is all really ready and ripe to perform the following: waste, fraud, and abuse. The money could be easily laundered and passed to contractors with no bid contract or sole source contracts. It would be a pretty simple process to fix it. First, perform a cost and feasibility analysis for making repairs. Determine what is wrong with the current jail. Determine the cost for fixing all those problems. Then determine what the needs are versus the wants for the jailed people and staff supporting the jail. Then get professional jail architects to estimate the cost for the design of a jail that meets those needs. Allocate money to get the designs. Then get estimates based on those designs to actually build the building that meets the needs. Best value technically acceptable. Then you compare the cost of the repairs to the cost of a new jail. Bring all the evidence to the table. Why isn't anyone determining the best use of my money before they do all this? You got to exclude all the maintenance and operating costs from the capital expenditures since we're already paying for that. Then get the money somehow if there still wants to build a jail. Now might be the time to discuss the tax increase after all of that's done. The whole process seems out of order and repulsive. Who wants to spend $250 million for them, for their name to be put on a bronze plaque out in front of the building? It's just ridiculous the way that the people are handling this. Oh, let's just raise all this money and then figure out how to spend it. If that's not ripe for fraud, what is? Anyway, that's the end of my thought on the jail, but I have one other comment. And that is, I'd like to congratulate Tom Crosby on his outlasting the bad guys and the commies for trying to overthrow a duly elected officer. Thank you very much.
The next three are Francis Alvarez, Jeff Sturgis, and Rebecca Allen Jones. Francis Alvarez?
I am Francis Alvarez, Herbert, Arizona. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Good morning. I am a native of the grounds of Miracle Valley Bible College, and I have continued to participate as many have come and gone from that beautiful place throughout the years. It has been said for those that have come and been there that they've had their opportunity to do something with it, but they haven't. I see it in a different term. If they have been there, they've been there because there is a desire. There is a yearning to see that place grow, to become, uh, something prosperous as it used to be. They just financially were not able to do that. But you can see that the desire is real. While, uh, they have been on the grounds, I am thankful for it because if you drive by there at night and nobody is there, it is very, very dark. But when they were on the grounds, different ones, various ones, it was always lit up, a beautiful sign. I even had somebody text me this morning from Alabama. Asked, is the Bible college open? Can we come and visit? We're heading that way this summer. People come from all over the place. As I mentioned last, uh, time as I spoke here, Mr. Coxworth said when he was over there working, so many people would come to tour the place, to see the place, to be on the grounds one more time, just perhaps maybe a miracle would happen for them. People come there for hope. They come there for encouragement. They come there for some kind of inspiration. Even to this day, it lights up where there is hopelessness, where there feels defeat. And I believe in today's society, we need that. This is a time and an age where we need miracles. I don't know about you, but I still believe in miracles. And I believe God saves the best for last. And I believe that the latter shall be greater than the beginning. And so I am here to say, do not demolition any of the buildings. There is a prosperous destiny for that place. God has spoken it. Whether we believe in God or not, he has spoken, and what God has blessed, no man can curse. And so I just encourage you to be on God's side today when you gather at 3:00 p.m. and vote with him. Let's just trust God that he's going to do something. I mean, there's been an interest all these years, and there's still an interest. Many people are still desiring to see that. I've handed in a petition. Each one of you should have received your email. We have people that have signed against demolition in that place. And so I pray that you consider that this morning, and God bless you.
Uh, next, yes, Jeff Sturgis on Teams. Jeff, are you there?
Yes, good morning. My name is Jeff Sturgis. I live in Sierra Vista. Yes, the recall effort fell short by roughly 500 signatures below the required number. Since about 4,300 signatures were gathered during the four months, the average was well over 1,000 signatures a month. This means that had we had one more month to gather signatures, we would have easily reached the required number. Gathering signatures for a recall is a slow and cumbersome process. Each petition circulator is required to personally help each individual signer sign. Only registered voters in District 1 were qualified to sign for this recall. Each circulator needed to have every page of their petitions notarized. These petitions were then checked signature by signature at the county recorder's office for veracity of registration and residence. Hundreds more than 4,000 registered voters in District 1, Republicans, independents, and Democrats. I don't think any commies took the time, put their names out there, and made the effort to have their voices heard, telling the rest of Cochise County that this supervisor should have no role in governing our community. This recall effort demonstrated democracy in action. Folks did more than grumble. They acted because democracy requires informed and engaged citizens. These are informed, engaged folks who spent countless hours organizing events and petition circulators. Folks who drove and walked many miles knocking on many doors to gather signatures. Folks who bared wind, cold, hot sun, automobile exhaust, thumbs down, middle fingers up, and shouted insults on the side of busy roads to gather signatures. Folks who spent time writing and mailing cards to help gather signatures. Folks who spent time making phone calls to get other folks to sign. Folks who donated money to the cause, and of course, thousands of folks who sign. What motivated all these folks? You need to know, I will start to list the reasons until my time runs out and hope to continue with this extensive list later. These folks did all these things because they did not accept a supposed leader who upended our county's election processes. Drew negative local, national, and international embarrassing media attention to our county. Refused to certify our county's 2022 election. Thankfully, the other two supervisors did their job. Had they not, it would have disenfranchised all voters in Cochise County, more Republicans than Democrats. Interfered with respected law-abiding election officials.
Time is up, Jeff. Uh, next speaker is Rebecca Jones.
Madam Chair and Supervisors, my name is Rebecca Allen Jones. In recent weeks, you've heard the outcry of people desperate to save the Miracle Valley Bible College property. I've submitted to you copies now of a second notice from We the People petitioning you to properly steward this historic property in your ownership. I believe you each care about stewarding this property well. This afternoon, you'll be asked to form opinions on whether the property should be demolished. Keep in mind that according to statute 11-268, action on the property is currently prohibited. Dan Coxworth informed me all bids for demolition came in below a level requiring him to gain authorization from your board. He said his intent is to proceed with demolishing all but two, three buildings once the state historic preservation officer has finished her consultation in several days. If you do not revoke his authority to take action on the property, he will destroy history forever. Has Dan no respect for the Christian faith or religious history? The church building has a mural of Jesus painted by a prominent area painter. The tower was built for Christian prayer by an architect whose work is celebrated in the National Register. This property is sacred and historic, the whole church building and the rest of the property. Dan keeps insisting that the fees for demolition will be recouped with a sale. This would still be a loss of tax dollars. Asbestos abatement is disruptive, expensive. It's not required to sell. It's fiscally irresponsible to demolish these buildings and an unethical dismissal of religious rights. I ask you again, why is Dan Coxworth in such a hurry to demolish? Why is he pushing for all of this? Statute 41-862 makes it clear that you have a duty to this historic property which you own. You are to use extreme caution that it does not get demolished or allowed to deteriorate. You have a responsibility to steward this historic property. I don't believe that your role is to be historians, know to preserve. That is my job. Please let me help. According to statute 41-862, you are responsible to ensure the property is not inadvertently sold to any party which may not properly steward this historic property. Demolition would be a dereliction of duty. Auction would risk it a sale to any number of interested parties which may not properly steward this deeply spiritual property. As the great granddaughter of the man who founded the town of Miracle Valley and this property, I am deeply committed to making this property a positive oasis for us all. On my organization, Miracle Valley Oasis Center, has offered you a serious letter of intent to purchase the property. I implore you to ban Dan Coxworth from taking any action on the property during your ownership and to consider our offer seriously. This community has suffered enough pain. Let us help turn a new leaf so we can all move forward positively. We can do this without trying to erase history. My great grandparents helped this community thrive. My family can be trusted again. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next three people, Laurel Gagline, Allison Morris on Teams, and John Dorsey.
Good morning. My name is Laurel Gagline. I'm a resident in Benson, Arizona. And I would like to bring to your attention, uh, issue with, uh, home occupation permits. I think we need a zoning text amendment that will greatly, uh, benefit the citizens of Cochise County as well as planning zoning the staff and you guys. So currently, it's my understanding that residents don't have to be notified before a business is granted permission to have a home occupation permit in their neighborhood. And this causes a lot of issues when people are not given their voice from the beginning and be able to come to agreeance, um, and raise their, their voice, whether they want it or not. And I feel like, um, we could spearhead a lot of problems from arising for planning and zoning and citizens if they're giving a voice in the beginning. Um, one day, one day I was talking to Robert with planning and zoning, and he said, thank you for being cordial over the phone because everyone has been really rude and nasty. And, you know, I apologized and I said, I'm sorry, people in Cochise County, their voices are not being heard. And I feel like we need to change in the way that the home occupation permits are operated. And so people will have a voice in the beginning before they are permitted. Thank you.
Ma'am, please repeat your name for me.
It's, um. Laurel Gagline.
Thank you.
Allison Morris on Teams, are you there, Allison? Allison Morris on Teams, are you there, Allison? I don't hear any things. Um, John Dorsey, I'm not sure if that's Teams or in person. It doesn't say.
I'm on.
Are you online, John?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Loud and clear. Go ahead. You have three minutes. Name and address first, please.
Uh, good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is John Dorsey, and I am from Amarillo, Texas. I'm sure y'all will remember me from speaking in person on April 25th in regards to my opposition to the demolition of the Miracle Valley Bible College. Just to recap, and I want to speak on these things again, just to establish my connection to the land and my love for Miracle Valley. My father, Harry Dorsey, worked for AA Allen from 1967 until 1970. My family and I, we actually lived on the land in apartment five, uh, starting in October of 96, and we were there until November of 97. Uh, at which time my parents, who were the associate pastors, attempted to purchase the property along with Marvin Richardson, the head pastor from the Hispanic Assemblies of God, who had vacated the property in 95. Now, by no stretch of the imagination did we want to leave, but we simply just were not able to come up with the money that they were wanting in order for us to acquire Miracle Valley. Uh, many of our congregation were men and women that had worked for Brother Allen. Uh, that included the Atchison's, the Kimmerys, the Swearingens, uh, the Shaners, Sister Kitchen, Sister Caraway. Uh, the Walls were there with us. Uh, they also wanted to see Miracle Valley restored right there along with us. Uh, and even though there have only been just a few of us speak out publicly in regards to preserving the buildings, there are still countless others who want to see Miracle Valley restored. Uh, we used all of the buildings during our time out there, except for the dormitories and library. Uh, we were still able to have church services inside of the tabernacle. Uh, we even held a camp meeting in February of 97 where people from all over the country were in attendance. And that did include many of the people that were a part of Miracle Valley back in the 50s and 60s as well. Uh, I've prayed for years of actually being able to restore Miracle Valley myself. That's how much of a love that I have for the property. I believe it will be a place in the end times where there will be a worldwide revival, where people will come from all over the face of this earth and once again be saved, healed, and delivered there. What God says that the earth and the fullness thereof belong to God, and I believe that it will be his will ultimately that shall prevail in pertaining to Miracle Valley's future. Almighty God knew that we were all going to be here today before even the foundations of the world. And there's a reason why we are all still talking about this land that was donated to AA Allen by Urban Line Decker back in 1958, which was 65 years ago. And if my time isn't up yet, then I just might go ahead and preach. But, um, I do thank you very much for your time, and I would ask for your consideration very carefully in regards to the preservation of Miracle Valley, which is not only a Christian site, but it is a historical site as well. And I thank you for your time.
Uh, next is George Adams, and then we will have, um, Melvin Harder and Johnny Wilson.
My name's George Adams. I live at 3368 East Getlos Road, Douglas. And I'm here to talk about Cali Principal, same subject my friend Fred speaks about here quite frequently. Uh, I don't understand the county not responding to us. I had a meeting with this gentleman here and some people with the DOT. They gave me some directions to do. I followed those directions. I've had not heard back. Coming up here and talking to you people is one-sided. Nothing will get resolved. How come we can't have meetings and discuss those problems? There's more people live out there off Cali Principal than the other three roads. We're counting traffic now with traffic counters. And we're already at 400% more traffic on Cali Principal than the other three roads. And there are some roads, there's not one car goes down a day, and you grade and do, take care of them. You can take care of Cali Principal at zero cost to the county just by being a little smarter with the money and the, the assets you have. So I'm asking, Anne? DOT County? Let's have some meetings and talk about this. Look at our ideas, and you tell us why you're grading roads that no one is using. There's no needed access back there to where these roads go. There's other avenues to get there. Please work with us and we'll work with you. If you need data, we'll collect it. I'm an engineer. I can build the equipment, minimal cost. Get you the data you need if you want traffic data. If you want flow data, where is the traffic going? I can get you that. You don't need to use the assets of the county for that. Please work with us. There are more people need Cali Principal fixed than the roads that no one lives on or travels. It makes no sense why the county is doing it. There's got to be reasons you're doing it. How about sharing them with us? Please, thank you.
Uh, Melvin Harder? Not sure if it's in public or on Teams, Melvin Harder. Melvin Harder? Uh, next we have Johnny Lee Wilson.
Johnny Lee Wilson, Sierra Vista, Arizona. Good morning. I wasn't supposed to be here. I was supposed to be in Douglas doing a stress test. That's the reason I'm dressed like I am. I get all the way over there and they say, well, we were gonna call you and tell you we can't do it. There's too many people doing that nowadays. They can't do this, can't do that. They're not doing their jobs. And I don't know, I'm, my little thing today is it's still on voter integrity. We need to fix our elections, like the one that just got mailed out to us. How, how do we do the chain of custody? Once you sign it, put it in the envelope? Anybody knows where it goes? Like right now, look what's happening in Phoenix. Our illegitimate governor is taking all these containers that was Ducey put on the wall. And now she says she's gonna bring them down here and she's gonna house the illegal aliens in it. What's up with that? That's where you need election integrity. And what's gonna happen tomorrow? Does the Fed say they're gonna bring out a bunch of stuff against Hunter Biden and Joe Biden, the crime family? Here we have a sitting president that's one of the biggest crooks in the country. He sells us down the drain, Ukraine, all this crap. I'm, I'm tired of it. I know you guys aren't in charge of that. I want you to take care of Cochise County. And I'm glad your recall fell through. And for the people that don't realize it, when they call in and say you broke the law by not certifying the election. You don't have to. And everything you did was not illegal. They just come up with all this. Well, watch my mouth. I fasted for 24 hours. I'm hungry and I'm tired. Anyway, I thought I was talking, give you my two cents worth, and, uh, I'm looking forward to seeing a new chairman. I don't, whichever, whatever you come up with, I'll back you. And I thank Anne for her service and being the chairperson. So anyway, I, uh, I just wish things could get fixed. I understand what they're doing with the, the mission here. I didn't even know about it, you know? I found about it last two weeks ago. And I'm, I'm, I'm with them on that, but we need more people to take care of our country. Our country is going to crap in a handbasket right now. It really is. And so I, the Republicans are no more. The Democrats are no more. The Republicans went to being rhinos and this, uh, whatever.
Time is up. Thank you. Uh, Christie Isley? Is that in person? Christie Isley?
Hello, this is Melvin Harder.
Go ahead, Chrissy. Name and address and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Christie Isley.
Could you pull the microphone down? Right, thank you.
I live in Miracle Valley, Arizona. I would like to ask you today to obviously not demolition the buildings in there. Five years ago, God brought me to Arizona to Miracle Valley. I'm not an older person. I didn't know the history. I didn't know anything about AA Allen. I was just seeking the Lord. God brought me here and I had an encounter with the Lord like no other. And in the last five, God, when five years ago gave me a vision for this place, an oasis was part of this vision. And in the last five years, I've talked to hundreds of people who have come here and had encounters with the Lord. I, this place was originally donated by Urban Line Decker to be a place for people to come and experience, to be a Bible, his version was be a Bible college until Jesus returns. I think that this place should be a place where people can come and experience the love of God that they need because God is still calling people here. He still has plans for this property. I think I would like to request that you consider putting this property in a trust and God, God being the main person and allowing the Miracle Valley Oasis Rebecca to be a trustee and manage this trust for God. I believe that you should allow this place to be a place where people can come and experience God for themselves. I think it would be a disservice to anyone seeking God to demolish this place. I think it's just, I live literally right next door and I think it's the most beautiful sight. I, I do see the buildings that do need to be repaired, but because I've seen the vision, I've seen it done. But I just would like to request that you please consider, we, we, we live in this nation, we, we, this morning we stood up and we said the pledge of allegiance, one nation under God. Let Arizona be a place where people can come and experience that if that's where God's calling them. I just think that that would be amazing. So thank you for your time.
Next is Ronald Mullen.
Yes. Supervisor English.
Who was speaking?
Madam Chair, I do believe that was Mr. Harder on the phone.
Yeah. Yeah. Did he not speak when I called his name?
No, I get muted on this system. Are you there?
Yes, Mr. Harder. We'll give you time, three minutes, please. Name the address.
Okay, my name's Dr. Melvin Harder and I live in Sierra Vista, Arizona. I would like to say that I am against the destruction of the, and demolition of the Miracle Valley College and the properties there. I am against Don, or Dan Coxworth taking control that he has and proceeding through the papers, announcing his demolition and doing anything on that property. I was there, our, our organization purchased that property on August the 4th, 1999. And we were there through 2008, about 10 years. We invested hundreds of thousands of dollars there. We were able to improve the property. All of the new roofs that you see on that property are roofs that we had placed on. Those, those buildings had, we insulated and put fire coated drywall and remodeled them to the best of our ability. We had children with a childcare center there in operation that was second to none. The state of Arizona gave us report on how wonderful our childcare was. We also had an assisted living home there with 10 people. It filled up quite rapidly. And we had a great thing going there. Again, Mr. Bob down at the assisted living department at the state level gave us rewards for our assisted living home. In fact, when it seemed like we lost the property, he wanted us to keep our license, hoping that we could gain it back. We had a Christian school there helping young children. We've done a lot for the community. We have people in the Miracle Valley community who praised us for our summer school programs that we had involving the children in that community. We had church services in the big tabernacle upwards of 250 people in attendance at our particular, at, at our camp meeting, so we held. The Bible's college was there. We were implementing a Bible college, but we had to reduce some of the buildings to upgrade them. But we did have about 25 students that came through that, that school. I want to say that I want, I would like to have the opportunity in our organization to acquire the college back on an auction. I'd like to see this property go to an auction and, and we can try to get it back. And we do have funding that that could be able to, to gain the property and we're against any jail to be put on that property. We have funding that could remodel that church. Now, let me mention this. Our organization is the one that took all the roofs and everything else of that particular church. We did that and it's exactly like it was when we left. Since 2008, no one has done anything to improve. Okay, thank you.
Next is Ronald Mullen. Sorry.
My name is Ronald Mullen. I live 1818 East Apache Point Road in Hartford, Arizona. I'm joined today with my wife, Kim, who does not like to come for a, in a public arena. So she's asked me to read something for you, which I'll add after mine. Good morning, Madam Chairman, esteemed panel members, fellow residents of Cochise County and guests. I speak today on behalf of Miracle Valley. The property and buildings have been obtained and developed by AA Allen during the late 1950s and 1960s. I was introduced to Miracle Valley property after relocating to Arizona from Oregon in 2016. As, as one proceeds eastbound along Arizona State Highway 92, Miracle Valley is a hard place not to notice. It rises above the desert floor with its beautiful domed topped tabernacle. I'm still struck by wonder of the places it sits as an anchor of the southern Arizona state border. I came to realize later, not only was this place a prominent visage, but also the tangible feel of well-being one receives as you are allowed to stroll about the grounds. A peaceful place, a restful place. Sedona may have a vortex, but we have a place of miracles. As some of you know, miracles have been identified here and that, that date well back into antiquity. As far back as the 16th century, miracles have been known to occur around and near this valley. The research is easy to find. And locate, and located in Cochise County is our southern Arizona border, Miracle Valley. Rich in history of the workings of man and God, crowned with, is this, crowned with this place is the rough gem waiting to be birthed and used again in its intended role. Would you dynamite Coronado Monument? Just a short distance away it is. To suggest the destruction of the prominent historic buildings located at Miracle Valley would carry a feeling of shattered loss to this community. As stewards of this place, it is our duty to preserve the legacy of Miracle Valley by preparing this place birthed in the vision of AA Allen for the future generations. We recognize the importance of the future of our children and our children's children, giving them understanding of what it took here, what happened here at this place. Showing them that we value the coming generation by showing them the past. We want to show them what good stewardship looks like. Is my greatest desire that you find, as I did, the awe and wonder of this place steeped in history, that you hear not just words, but esteemed board, you will receive the sense of awe and pride in standing up for what God has started. Show good stewardship to the future and listen to the many voices that have spoken out for the preservation of this prominent and wonderful place named Miracle Valley. This is from my wife, Kim Mullen. I'm not comfortable speaking and do not like to waste your time. I put my talk in a short rhyme.
I'm sorry, your time.
I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you very much.
I think that concludes the people who asked to speak in the call to the public. So we now move to the consent agenda and that's items one through five. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve consent agenda, agenda items number one through five.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and so ordered. We now move to the public hearings. And the first one is new liquor license application. Could I have a motion on the floor, please?
Madam Chair, I move we approve series 12 restaurant new liquor license applications submitted by Manuel Carrillo. Could I have for Los Geta Grille Steakhouse located at 7196 South Highway 92, Hartford, Arizona, 85615.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I am going to open the public hearing. Is there any information from the clerk that we need to hear?
Madam Chair and members of the board, the application was reviewed and recommended for approval by the appropriate departments. The Health and Development Services Departments are working with the applicant on proper permitting. Property taxes for the parcel are current. The notice and application were posted as required by state law and no formal protests were received. The applicant paid the $100 processing fee and board staff is recommending approval.
Any questions or comments from the board during the public hearing?
None.
Hey, hearing none, then I will close the public hearing. We do have a motion on the floor. There's no other comment. Hearing none, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and so ordered. The next one is an item that was tabled and so the first thing is I need to have it removed from the table.
Madam Chair, if I may, I think that the last time we had an issue like this, we, we went out of our normal process and did not do a motion first because it says approve or deny. And so we waited for that motion for the end of the, the discussion and so on.
I was asking for a motion to remove it from the table. We cannot act on it in any manner until it's removed from the table.
I'll do that. Madam Chair, I move, I move that we remove item number seven from the table.
Second.
Okay, so it is a public hearing. And so in order to get information to make our decision.
I heard the motion to remove in the second, but I didn't hear the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is removed from the table now for action during a public hearing. And so Ms. McLaughlin, I will open the public hearing first so that we may ask questions and, and I think we have speakers and people who wish to comment on this. So we'll hear your comments first.
Thank you. This is an appeal case regarding a recent special use case SU 2302. This item was originally scheduled to be heard March 16th due to an unanticipated event. The applicant requested the item be tabled until this date certain, which was granted by the board. As regular February 8th, 2023, meaning the commission denied a special use request by a vote of four, two, one, denial, approval, abstain to offer guest lodging on a 10 acre parcel and a portion of an adjoining 10 acre parcel in unincorporated Benson, Arizona. The establishment of guest lodging is subject to special use authorization from the Planning and Zoning Commission in rural zoning. The business is located at 440 West Cimarron Lane, Benson, Arizona, and 536 West Alamo Lane, Benson, Arizona. In this case, both the special use applicant and the appellant are the same person. The applicant, appellant is asking the board to overturn the denial decision of the commission. There are essentially three uses on the applicant's parcels. The first is residential. The applicant and his family live on site. The second is horseback riding business. Both residential and horseback riding are permitted uses in rural zoning. The third use is guest lodging. We define that as an area for accommodation for overnight or short-term lodging such as hotel motel resorts, guest ranches, group camps and campgrounds. This would include the campsites and RV hookups shown on the hook, on the concept plan. This is the only use that will be impacted by this appeal. Meaning if this appeal is denied, the applicant will no longer be able to offer tent sites or RV hookups for rent. If the appeal is approved, he will be able to offer both. But the conditions from the special use will be attached. In either case, the residential use and commercial stables can remain. There are 10 factors staff uses to evaluate all special use proposals. In this case, eight of the factors applied, it fully complied with four factors. It complied with conditions regarding three factors. And I listed does not comply under public input. The original special use application was included for this docket. There's not a lot of neighbors in the area. These are five to 10 acre lots. But there are some neighbors that wish for the area to remain strictly residential and strongly objected to this docket. Many cited traffic concerns and I will point out the area is zoned rule, not residential. The rural zoning district permits a much greater range of permitted and special uses than residential zoning. For example, churches, animal hospitals, farmers markets, small grocery stores are all permitted uses and would likely generate much or more, as much or more traffic than commercials tables. There are other issues cited by the neighbors such as density, odor, pest control, dust. To mitigate these impacts, I conditioned entering into a private maintenance agreement stipulating horse manure removal in the right of way. I conditioned entering, I limited the guest lodging to four rental RV sites, two tent camping sites and one guest cottage, limited guest lodging to temporary use by not permitting occupation of more than six months per year by the same occupant. Regarding odor control, the property owner was conditioned to follow best management practices for nuisance odors and flies. And the property owner was required to retain the services of a licensed pest control service if they were unable to control flies. And finally, all onsite writing areas were to be adequately, adequately maintained to prevent the creation of nuisance dust during training or writing activities. Periodic watering of the area was required as necessary to control the dust. As I previously mentioned, there is a combination of permitted and special uses present. Although the request is for guest lodging, I did try to look at the site holistically and address neighbor concerns through the special use process. Concerns of dust, pest control and odors are generally not a part of guest lodging requests. Because the request was denied, the permitted use of residential and commercial stables can remain. However, the conditions I recommended are largely not attached. There are two requirements the board must consider evaluating appeals of special uses. The first is a claim that any part of the decision was erroneous, arbitrary, capricious or an abuse of discretion. The second is additional testimony not considered by the commission. I'll start with the reason provided why the appellant believes there was an erroneous decision. As stated in his application, the appellant states the majority of those present to object were not proximal neighbors, therefore not impacted by their request. The neighbor objections, traffic manure, flies did not relate to the special use requests for guest lodging. And he felt the commission was overly influenced by the testimony of this presence, which the applicant characterized as untrue or exaggerated. In terms of additional testimony, the applicant stated he had monthly computerized schedules to refute traffic concerns, legal correspondence, documenting past harassment. And he will present testimony today, which he claims that the proposed use is appropriate and will actually reduce traffic impact. There are two potential outcomes of your decision today. An approval will reverse the commission's decision and would permit the guest lodging, meaning the tents and RV sites rentals. A denial would affirm the decision of the commission and guest lodging would not be permitted moving forward. On this slide, I provide factors in favor of the appeal and factors in favor of appeal denial. In terms of factors in favor, the applicant has submitted a rationale of why they feel the decision or any part of the decision was erroneous. This was a split decision of the commission. And the commissioners that voted against the item did not provide a specific rationale to attach to their vote. Also add that staff supported the special use request as well as this appeal. In terms of factors in favor of denial, it would overturn a split decision of the commission, which is not something which is not something that staff or this board takes lightly. Also, there is still the issue of public input and their concerns. Staff recommends approval of this appeal, which would reverse the decision of the commission and allow the guest lodging to continue, attaching the original conditions of the approval to the special use request. I conclude with two sample motions on this slide and that is my presentation. I'm available. Speaker requests.
I have several people who wish to speak and I think we should start probably with the one who has asked for the appeal. Ronald Sorota.
Good morning supervisors and staff. My name is Ronald Sorota. I live at four four zero West Cimarron Lane in Benson and thank you for your time. As a bit of history, seven years ago, I purchased our property that's become the subject today of our appeal. At the time I purchased it, it was completely set up for horses. Most of the property was fenced and cross fenced into horse turnouts. There were five shade structures for horses. There was a tack barn, a hay storage barn, a well with extensive water infrastructure, running water to every horse area as well as for irrigation. There were two septic tanks on that property. Approximately a year later, I purchased the Jason property, which you might have seen on the map, with a very similar infrastructure. It is fenced, cross fenced for horse turnouts. It has a small casita. There are three RV sites which have its own dedicated septic, fifty amp electric service and water. Both properties are located near the San Pedro River and have abundant old growth mesquite trees. It's a unique destination location for locals and tourists who want to enjoy horseback riding in our beautiful countryside and in our beautiful historic area. These properties were set up originally to be horse properties. By virtue of the variety of permits that were issued to include a recent upgrade to our special use horseback riding stable to a commercial riding stable permit, the county has been involved and part of the development since long before I acquired the parcels. Almost everything that would be needed to operate as we operate is already there and was there. What I discovered over the past several years is that many people like to stay longer than a one hour or two hour stay. They want to stay overnight for one or two nights and enjoy the area, immerse themselves in the ranch experience and our lives that we offer to share. These guests enjoy frequenting local restaurants, stores. They go to Tombstone. They go to Bisbee. They go to Tubac. They go to Carstner Caverns. They spend money locally. They make a significant or they make an economic contribution to our local economy and to agritourism. What could be more natural than our partners, you the county, for approving our application for overnight guest lodging? We believe quite strongly this is the highest ambitious for property of this type and your approval is just a part of the logical progression of this property over the years. We have very few neighbors, as Christine said. Not one of the neighbors' houses is visible as you as you drive in Alamo Lane heading to our property. The houses are set back among the trees and are set back from the road. At our last hearing, I think back in February, they objected to our.
In a public hearing, we don't normally keep to the three minutes for the person who's asking for this.
I only have another minute.
Is that not correct?
That's that's correct. Usually when you have a hearing like this and you give the applicant the appeal, usually like ten minutes.
That's that's what I was.
I only have another minute. I'm almost finished. Thank you very much. Our neighbors objected several months ago to my application citing mainly traffic concerns. And while we acknowledge that and I have some comments about that, it's entirely irrelevant to our current instant application because our actual guest lodging actually will serve to reduce traffic to a certain extent because these people are not coming in every day. They stay and they just relax and don't drive anywhere. One of our neighbors who I believe testified earlier several months ago, went on the record stating that she counted fifty-six cars in a day. The way I see it, that's fifty-six cars pulling in, fifty-six cars pulling out or one hundred twelve cars going up and down the road a day. Considering we have six traffic spots and a very limited number of horses, there's no way we could accommodate that amount of traffic and that that statement is just inaccurate. They also testified that our traffic is destroying the road. That's also an inaccurate statement. Last year, at my expense, we hired an operator and a grader to come in. He completely regraded the road. And just about a month ago, we went and had some of the rough areas in the road regraded. As part of the condition for our our commercial permit for horseback riding, I agreed and actually entered into a PMA, a private road maintenance agreement, where I in participation with our neighbors, neighbors agree to maintain the road, keep it clean. In my testimony today, I'd like to state for the record that in my opinion, the road is better today than it was seven years ago. I have today, as Christine alluded to, I didn't submit it online, but I have copies of our computerized schedule, our daily schedule, many, many sheets, and I did an average of about over the last six months and the last six months is our busy season when it's cooler here, when it's when it's winter time here. We have a lot of people that come down, as you know, to Cochise County and they like to go horseback riding. So that's during our busy season. Our average per day of cars that coming in was three point five per day. Now, yes, there are days when we have more cars come in, maybe five or six or seven, but there's also just as many days where we have one or no cars, where we have no no traffic. We have no bookings. In conclusion, we're quiet, quiet, clean, respectful. We only want to share our way of life with others and help them create great lasting family memories. We want to get along with our neighbors and we appreciate their wish for privacy. We'd like to continue to work with the county. We'd like to continue to work with our neighbors for everybody to get along. I ask respectfully today that you approve our application for overnight guest lodging and thank you for your time.
Next I have Renee Schmidt. Renee Schmidt. Is Renee in the audience? Well, I think it was determined before the meeting started that during a public hearing, now normally we don't call out the names of people, you know, when they're speaking on one of our issues or against. But in a public hearing, it was determined that I should, for the record, put the names on there of people who are either opposed or against. This one is a support Renee Schmidt. Next is Loretta Gogli.
Madam Chair, may we have the addresses of the the people who are supporting and who are.
I'd have to ask the county attorney on that one, you know, if they were here, they would be giving us their name and address in a public hearing. Should I read the name and address both for the record since it was told to me that we should put the?
Yes, you should.
Okay, then Renee Schmidt's address is Crestwood Road, Eau Claire, Wisconsin. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Loretta Gagline. I live at twenty-seven eleven North Ocatia. I also own property on Alamo Lane west of Ron Sorota. Please deny the appeal for the Sorota guest lodging and RV park. Ron has stated the majority of the people present at the P and Z meeting were not proximal neighbors. He counted two. I I was there. I counted eleven proximal neighbors at that P and Z meeting. He doesn't know his neighbors. There were seven that live in the neighborhood and there were four that are property owned. Ron also stated that P and Z were overly influenced by the untrue and outlandish statements. I trust you as board of supervisors that appoint P and Z members that you have faith that they make the right choice on these matters and that they are not influenced by others. Ron states he has a limited amount of horses available. On his website, there's twenty-nine horses. So what what is the perspective here as far as how many people can ride? Evidence presented shows traffic is as he currently operates his his lodging and RV park, the traffic has not decreased. In fact, it increased with the golf carts and ATVs trucks going between his parcels and lots of dust. The city of Benson has plenty of RV parks and motels available that collect a bed tax. The bed tax is used to promote tourism. Unfortunately, Ron again benefits from that advertising as he does not collect a bed tax or have a business license. Ron stated since twenty seventeen, he moved in, neighbors caused him nothing but problems. Again, he's been an unfriendly neighbor. Ron also claimed that a specific person was organizer of this group, which I think each one of us business or property owners can make our own mind on on our own choice. But unfortunately, we do not want lodging and RVs in our neighborhood or are you for neighborhood. Please deny this request. Thank you.
Next is Stephen Brighton Gross. Sorry if I butchered your name.
Good morning. My name is Steve Brighton Gross and I reside at four fifty Alamo Lane and adjoining properties between Ron's parcels. Again, I hope that you uphold the commission's decision. It was the right decision. Hold on, I forgot my glasses. And I'd like to thank board members for this opportunity to voice our opinion. Mr. Sorota's intent to open a home occupation and equine trail riding business in our neighborhood. We weren't aware of this until it was actually in the swing when it started operating. We had no say so before it operated. Obviously, the the rules have changed where you don't have to have written notification to open such a business in a rural area. I think that's wrong. Anyway, he has a permit to operate on his ten acre parcel. The thing is, is he is not operating on this parcel. He's operating within our community, within our easements and within private properties. He's been doing this since he moved in and started his business. It's wrong and that's the issues that everybody's having here. Another thing is it made this kind of a personal attack. I do not have enough time to to do my statement, but he has made this a personal attack on me. All I know is we made multiple inquiries and complaints filed over the past few years about Mr. Sorota's business practices, but were they were never checked for compliance. That's another issue. He has never been in compliance and believe he had no intention of complying with the home occupation guidelines. With the multitudes of complaints and in inquiries, we are yet to see any county enforcement for these violations. He only meets five of the seven parameters required to operate a home occupation business since he opened. In his statement, Mr. Sorota stated that he has, Mr. Sorota has the decency to suggest the commission were swayed in any way by mob mentality. This again is false and ridiculous. The so-called mob are his neighbors and it is very obvious he doesn't know who his neighbors are or how many there are. Because they were here and they wanted to voice their opinion as well, since they never had the opportunity. Anyway, to say they're loud, boisterous and volatile is again far from the truth. Some of the attendees gasped upon Mr. Sorota's statement when he purged himself on multiple occasions, speaking before the commission, speaking about averages of cars. I apologize. I do not have enough time to finish this statement. That was a quick three minutes.
Well, maybe you took so much time getting your glasses.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Mary Brighton Gross is next, please.
Thank you for your time.
Give her give her your notes. First, your name and address, please.
My name is Mary Brighton Gross. I also live at four five zero Alamo Lane. I don't have a statement prepared or anything, but what I want to address is the RVs and the camping sites. The two or three RV sites that he says were there were actually where the people lived. They had trailers there. They weren't RV sites and the second parcel he bought did not have sectioned and cross fenced and all that. They just lived there. It was two older women and their brother. And then as far as his residence, yeah, that was set up for horses. The gentleman and his wife that lived there, the McGraws, they had maybe five or six horses and they went out and did cattle work. They didn't invite neighbors and people from across the state to come in and do trail rides all over people's property. They did actual cattle work. As far as businesses benefiting from his RV and camping, I think the neighborhood of Benson would have more impact if they actually stayed in Benson, paid a bed tax, where they would have a chance to see the community and go to the stores, not way out down north Ocatia where there's nothing. So that's what I have to say, that the RVs and tents are imposing on our home. He's putting us living in his business. I don't want to live in somebody's business. I want to live at my home. I don't want to live in an RV park and I don't want to live at a campsite. I want to live in my home. Thank you.
And next is Laurel Gogli. Gogli. Gaglines. I wouldn't have guessed that. Thank you.
I'm Laurel Gagline. I live at one nine nine West Lightning Lane in Benson, Arizona, and I am a proximal neighbor to Ronald Sorota and I was at the planning zoning meeting along with all our other neighbors and several that live down the road. At the for the planning and zoning meeting, we were told that we could bring up all our issues with the home occupation permit because the lodging is a subset of that. So we did because we have a very long list of issues that we're having with his business, not only the horseback riding, but also the lodging, for instance, trespassing all over private property and when he's been repeatedly told not to. For the lodging itself, we're having an issue with traffic, the dust and the noise, and this is a safety and emergency issue. Our road down there is a single lane dirt road and oftentimes his clients and RVs block our roadway because it's not designed and engineered for all this traffic coming and going. We have several elderly people in our neighborhood and this is an issue. What if an ambulance needs to come out to our neighborhood and his? neighborhood and his clients are blocking our roadway? Several times I've had to wait 20 to 30 minutes for RVs to figure out how to pull onto his property because it's not designed and engineered for this. A neighbor's oxygen delivery was already prohibited from his clients blocking our roadway. So off of Ocatillo, our private easements, their private easements in our neighborhood and they're for the ingress and egress of the local landowners, the residents. They are not deeded for public commercial use. We did not give him permission to be using them commercially and we will not be giving him permission because we do not want lodging, much less his horseback riding business in our neighborhood. He's completely destroying the peace and tranquility of our neighborhood. The whole reason why we live 15 miles north of Benson, out in the middle of nowhere and he's bringing everyone into our neighborhood. We don't want this. And as you can see from the petition we did with all the signatures, many people in our community on Ocatillo are in agreeance. They don't want this as well. We also have a safety issue with non-residents on our road because we do have multiple hills and there are blind spots and there have been head-on collisions in the past. So this is a safety issue, having non-residents on our road in our neighborhood. Benson has in and of itself 16 RV parks, four hotels and two motels. We don't need people staying out in our neighborhood, destroying the peace of our neighborhood. They can go stay in Benson. So we ask you, please put yourself in, in our shoes. If you had lived out there since the 60s, 70s and 80s, how would you feel if this man came into your neighborhood?
Uh, the, the next speaker is Brian Gagline.
Please deny the lodging. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Brian Gagline. I live at 2711 North Ocatilla. I guess all, a lot of what I'd say is already been said because it's the truth. Ron can deny it. We own five acres adjacent to Mr. Sirota. We live out here for reason, peace and quiet. The traffic has increased since we moved in. We do, a lot of the traffic has increased since he moved in. We do not want or need a RV campground lodging. I've seen the dust created by not only cars, trucks, but the side-by-side and golf carts. We have a tight-knit neighborhood and I know of none that want this and we have the right to say no. It's just in the wrong place. The road is a one-track with hills and blind spots and I have to pull over numerous times and wait for customer, his customers go by. I've been coming down there since the 80s and have family down there. And his rebuttal, he called us liars and a mob. We don't have a mob mentality. We're all neighbors that stick together. Ron mentioned he's had problems since he moved here. So we, we don't want or need a dude ranch on Alamo Lane. Give him an answer, take a mile. And he referred to the less traffic with his proposed RVs. But then in the second breath, he said, people come down and they go to Carson or Caverns, they go to Tombstone. Well, they're coming and going. How's that reduce traffic? I don't get it. But that's about all I have to say.
Thank you.
I just had to say my piece.
Trina McPhail Sirota.
Good morning. I'm Trina McPhail Sirota. Um, so I'm going to try to be real short. So I just want to address the traffic exaggerations that you just heard. Um, we have one particular neighbor that drives up and down the road, two, three, four, multiple times a day at very, very high rates of speed. Um, and many times has come close to causing problems. Um, our traffic is minimal. It's quiet. They come, they stay. They come in one day, they leave. Whenever they leave, it's one in, one out. It is not as insane as they are making it sound. I've lived in Cochise County for over 25 years and I spent many of those years as a 4-H horse leader. So I am uniquely familiar with horses. Um, I spent two generations of 4-H kids learning and teaching them the wonderful benefit of having horses, riding horses and having that relationship with a horse. Each one of our horses are members of our family and as such, they are very dear to us. We take very good care of them. Um, they are, uh, well cared for, well kept. Our facilities are well kept. Um, we take great joy in bringing the Western way of life with just part of Cochise County, a historical part of Cochise County. Um, from as far back as the Buffalo Soldiers to the old cowboys that roam the hills in Tombstone. This is part of our heritage and is part of where we live. And we take great joy in sharing that with the people that come to our ranch. We've had ranch guests come from all over. Um, they enjoy the beauty of the San Pedro River Valley. Um, as my husband said, um, they shop in our stores, they eat in our restaurants in town. Um, they're very quiet. They're very respectful. Um, and they're all horse people that just enjoy the pleasure and the sheer, sheer joy of being on a horse out in the desert. As my husband's already stated, the property and its facilities, they've been there since before we had the property, the RV hookups, so on and so forth. I think you'll hear more about that in a little bit. Um, we feel like we are carrying on the traditions of Cochise County and our history, uh, from as far back as the Buffalo Soldiers from Fort Huachuca that roamed the mountains on horseback. Um, share the beauty of the lives that we live out, way out of town, away from everything, in the mountains. Um, just the spectacular beauty of our mountains from, there's nothing like it from the back of a horse. Um, so that's about all I have to say, other than, uh, we really, um, hope that you approve our request so that we can continue to share the beauty of Cochise County, Benson, the mountains where we ride and the mountains where we live. One other comment I do want to make, um.
Okay. Okay. Next is Nathan Straight. Your name and address, three minutes.
My name is Nathan Straight. I live at 199 West Alamo Lane. Thank you for your time and I'd like to thank the building department officials, Christine and Robert for all their hard work. I am opposed to this strongly. Enough is enough. We, for years now, we can't even drive in and out of our road without being stopped. Um, they do three rides a day. That's out and back in. That's six times a day, the road's blocked for 20 minutes. That's not even talking about the RVs that can take a half hour to make our road and get in and out of there. I do not believe the traffic circulation is compliant. And we have cameras that count the vehicles. So when it takes 56 pictures, that's 28 cars in and out. Simple math. I would like the existing zoning laws enforced in my neighborhood. I live out there because it's beautiful, it's peaceful, it's quiet. I, I am very strongly opposed to this. Thank you for your time.
Uh, next is Renee Talbot on Teams.
Yes, I've logged in. Thank you so very much. My name is Renee Marie Talbot. I am a certified rehabilitation counselor and a licensed practicing counselor associate in the state of Texas. My address is 9707 Falcon Bay, Converse, Texas. However, I grew up in Cochise County for a good part of life and I am a landowner and a taxpayer in Cochise County. I am absolutely for, um, in support of Mr. Sirota and his business. I've come to his ranch several times and what I have seen there is that, um, on those three rides a day, I have never blocked a single human from being able to access or get out of their driveway. I see that, um, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts come to the ranch to learn their badges, to learn horsemanship. I see persons with disability able to engage in horsemanship when places in Cochise County and Pima County have turned them away. Three rides a day, we've never blocked a driver, to my understanding. It was never, um, anything I ever experienced, but I will say there are a bunch of dune buggies that, um, happen on those same trails. It's a small intimate space at Ron's, not much traffic at all. It's not loud. I go there because it's quiet. It's gorgeous. It's pristine and Mr. Ron and his wife and their staff are greatly kind to the animals and the earth and I appreciate that. Again, I'm in full support of Mr. Sirota's plans because he's not really creating much noise, not as much noise as those dune buggies for sure, and certainly not as much dust. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Neil Berger on Teams. Neil, are you available?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I can. You have three minutes.
Okay, sorry Bob. Uh, Neil Berger, um, I live in Wisconsin. Um, I stay down there at Ron's Ranch in the wintertime. I'm, I'm one of the campers and you can't really call it an RV park. Got my camper there and Ron has an RV and an occasional overnight RV that pulls in there. Um, we help out there. I've been working with the tractor. I've been trying, I've been cleaning up some of the old trails. I've been fixing up the road. Um, Ron and Trina, they're, they're great people and we've had nothing but a lot of problems. And I'm sure the county has had the phone calls. They know how many phone calls they get every day. We get the same amount of people stopping at the end of the driveway, taking pictures of us sitting outside every day, multiple times a day, confrontations and how some people, I don't understand how they don't crash because their heads are cranked over looking at what we're doing. The, the traffic in there, I got two cameras up. The traffic up there by the residents there are double of, of anybody coming in there. There is so many exaggerations in, in the, in the whole community there. I, I'm from Wisconsin. People around here seem to be a lot nicer than Arizona, but if it wasn't for us snowbirds, Cochise County would be dead. There's a hundred thousand plus snowbirds that come down there and dump thousands of dollars a month into that county. And I have never hurt one person down there. I'm a kind person. Their ranch is wholesome. And I've never met such a group of neighbors that, like it was worded before, is a mob. It is, it is a great place. I wish everybody could just get along. The, it, I can't really say, you know, the driveway, yeah, the driveway is a little bit of question because of the hills and the traffic. The traffic is, is exaggerated though, but if it wasn't for the hills where people could see ahead, it'd be a little different story. But you know, with, you know, if I can help make it better, I will. You know, and I've been trying to do things around there to try to make the neighbors happy. Ron wants the neighbors happy. It just, I wish everybody could get along because this world needs more places like Ron's Ranch. And I guess that's about all I have to say.
Uh, thank you. Next is Renee Kito. Teams, are you on the, are you online, Renee? Renee, going once.
Which is the last name again, please?
Is that Renee on the line?
Well, I'm one of the Renays, but I've already spoken. Is there a second Renee?
I have a form here that you wish to speak on this issue.
Madam Chair, can you, uh, spell out the last name?
K I T K O.
K I T K O.
Is that you, Renee?
Sorry, that is not me, ma'am.
Okay. Then we'll move on. Uh, next is, uh, Krish Seismore. Doesn't say if it's on Teams or in person. Krish Seismore. In favor. Krish Seismore? Okay, uh, Robert Statchell.
Morning Supervisors. My name is Bob Statchell. I'm an attorney in Sierra Vista. I also represent the Sirotas. My address is 3600 St. Andrews Drive in Sierra Vista. Um, I'm actually the excuse for the item table and I appreciate, uh, you putting us back on the agenda. Uh, good news is that, uh, surgery went well. I'm back. Uh, really very short. I'm here to answer any legal questions that the board may have. But the one issue I did want to point to was the logical progression, which was mentioned before, of this particular property and the relationship of the owners and the, and the previous owners to the county staff. The fact that they were making multiple applications, they have through the state of Arizona and Cochise County, put in septic systems, multiple septic systems, multiple, uh, domestic water wells. These types of things are in place and this particular, and now that there's a commercial writing permit in place and in, in operation, hand in accordance with zoning in the area. I know there's a lot of questions about, well, gee, what, we should ask more of home occupations. Maybe there should be public hearings before they're given. That's the purpose of the zoning ordinances and the ordinance themselves is to ident, identify things that can occur in zoning specifications. And that, that issue has already been resolved. But in this instance, the question is the commercial stables. They are in place. They are operating within the, um, confines of the rules. But in this instance, the question is, what about the overnight guests and the RV parts? The infrastructure is in place. The staff and the county have worked together with the owners and their predecessors to develop that. This special use permit under the control of the county is the logical progression of this particular property. And if the court, if you have any questions, please let me know. Happy to cover them. Thank you.
I now need to read into the record, uh, names and addresses as suggested by the county attorney for those that, uh, are opposed. Jacqueline Brightengross, um, Alamo Benson's. These are support. Uh, Kristen Gardner, uh, Crestwood Road. I don't care what town, doesn't say. Um, this is a support, Sarah Webb, Patrick Lane, Phoenix. This is the support, uh, Patrice Marie Berger, um, Saratoga Avenue, Star Prairie, Wisconsin. This one is a support, Tom Gardner, Hay Creek Road, Pittsville, Wisconsin. Uh, this is the support, Erica Coons and High Street. No, no town mentioned. I think that, um, the board may have, uh, questions or things that you want to discuss. The last thing I'd like to do is give the, uh, appellant a chance for rebuttal of any of the statements. Yes, I'm sorry, did I butt into you?
I apologize, Madam Chair. I thought you were moving into discussion. I just wanted to remind the board of what the standard was they were using today, if you were beginning discussion. Um, because you're sitting in a quasi judicial role over the decision by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So you're, you're looking to see if it was erroneous, arbitrary, capricious, or an abusive discretion. You are looking at materials that were presented to the Planning and Zoning Committee and no additional materials.
I, additional materials, um, does that include statements from the people that were here that perhaps didn't speak at the other?
You're listening to the statements, but if there are documents or other information that people are trying to present now that wasn't presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, you should not really be considering that.
Right.
Okay.
And, and the reason being is because we're, we're looking at a decision that was made. So we have to look at the information that was in front of the group that made the decision and that was the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that was the Planning and Zoning Commission. So it isn't up to this time for us to take in any new information that you think you've given us in order to clarify things. The point of it is, we have to make our decision based on the same information that was given to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is that clear to the board?
Madam Chair, I would like to ask Ms. McLaughlin a few questions prior to Mr. Sirota's rebuttal so that he could have a chance to also speak to Ms. McLaughlin's comments if he so chooses. Thank you very much and thank you very much for your communications to me over the last few days on this issue. So what I'm, I'm going to read some excerpts out of the email that you sent me. It says, "The campsites and RV hookups meet our definition of guest lodging." And it says that before that was offered, the applicant, Mr. Sirota, should have requested a special use permit and he claims that he was unaware of that and I don't depay that. And I don't know all the county regulations especially as it has to do with planning and zoning. So we're talking about a special use permit regarding campsites and RV rentals. And I asked you, could he have had guest stays overnight at his residence prior to February 8th, 2023? And you answered yes to that, I believe. And the applicant could have had, over, this is what you said. The applicant could have had overnight guests in any of the three single family homes on the two parcels. He is still allowed to do so. No tent camping or RV camping for rent is allowed without a special use. And so that's what we're talking about today.
That's correct.
So, and then if that is denied, he will no longer be able to offer tent sites or RV hookups for rent. The original approval refers to his home occupation permit for commercial stables. And so it is the third use that you mentioned that is at issue today. The first being residential, the second horseback riding business, third use is what is at issue, which is guest lodging, which requires a special use. The home occupation permit has many restrictions in terms of number of employees and traffic generation. Is there any of the many restrictions that you would like to tell us about now that you haven't already presented in your PowerPoint presentation? Or would you like to go back to your PowerPoint presentation and tell us about the many restrictions?
Well, we didn't actually talk about the home occupation permit because that's more related to the commercial stables. That was through this special use process, we did elect to revoke the home occupation permit and require Mr. Sirota to go through commercial permitting for the commercial stables. That's either proper process is appropriate. But given the scale of his business and the objections of the neighbors, we felt the commercial permitting was a more appropriate process. Home occupations typically, they are limited to more than two employees. They're limited to no impacts of traffic beyond what would be typical for residential uses. There's no hard fast numbers. But the intent of the home occupation permit is for the use of the property to remain a residential site that you would not know is anything beyond that from the outside. This has, I think, over time evolved to more of a business, which is allowed within rural zoning, but does require commercial permitting. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. I just wondered how many of the many restrictions that you were going to go into and that's fine. In 2016, there were four RV hookups that indicate overnight, independent of campsites and cabins. A home on each parcel also indicates to me the potential of stays overnight. And he could have had a total of four single family houses on two RU4 parcels. Isn't that correct?
That's correct. He has a total of 20 acres.
Okay, for our regulation purposes, does traffic generation include horses?
No.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, in my opinion, it is clear that the applicant does not operate exclusively on his own property. And it is my opinion based on what I've heard that there has been an expansion of traffic above the original intent of the applicant. Would you care to address those based on what we've heard today? How about the increase in traffic or operating exclusively on his own property? The reason why I bring that up is because I'm very much in favor of people's property rights. And I admire Mr. and Mrs. Sirota's desire to have a business and I admire the type of business. And I'm sure that Mr. and Mrs. Sirota work very hard. But could you, could you talk about the issue of property rights and their operation, which I believe is not exclusively on their property?
It is.
Wouldn't that be on a business that we're not discussing today? We're discussing the housing, the tents, the not, and so you wouldn't be on someone else's property. That would be on the horse riding that's approved in another manner.
Okay, however, did you, did you say or indicate that if this application today is rejected by, or we go with the P&amp;Z's recommendation, that his home occupation business is revoked or does it revert back to his home occupation business?
No, no. The only issue is regarding the special use for the tent camping and the RV site hookup.
Okay, so essentially it would revert back to his home occupation business? Yes or no?
No.
No?
No, because now we have in place for the commercial stables, a commercial permit for that. So the home occupation is no longer relevant, has officially been revoked. In its place, we have a commercial permit for the stables.
Okay. And that was the action of the P&amp;Z?
That was, it was related to the action. We reserve the right as staff to at any time potentially revoke any home occupation permits if we feel that the applicant has exceeded any aspect of that permit and require that they do.
Okay, that's fine. And we as the board can basically say that we want it to revert back to home occupation if what the, if the issue before us today, we go with the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval.
That's not part of our decision today. Our decision today is only one of, do we support the decision made by the Planning and Zoning Commission? Or do we not? That's the only options we have today. It has nothing to do with the horse riding business.
However, we're talking about legal action and it seems to me that the, the Development Department has taken legal action by revoking the home use permit. Part of this, which was described as part of the evolution to what we have now.
The Chair is correct. The only issue for your sample motion is technically the guest lodging and whether or not you will support the appeal of the applicant.
I don't see a recourse besides to put in again for the home occupation business if we can't say that it returns to that in lieu of the commercial permit that we're looking at today. In other words, I believe it's a legal action that the Development Department took to revoke his home occupation business. Okay, so he's left with nothing if we do not approve his commercial permit. Instead of reverting back to, well, what we have in place is the home occupation business, which is, I believe, the way it should be.
I think I'd like to make comment that, just to clarify, the commercial permit stands no matter what decision we make today. They have a commercial permit to operate stables there and riding. So we're, we don't need to worry about the commercial or home occupation because that's done, that's going to happen. So, and I would like you to finish your questions. I just wanted you to understand that. And I wanted to understand it. So they have a license, basically a kind of a business license, a commercial approval to operate stables on that location. And they will continue to take three rides a day at that location, whether people are living there or not. So, or residing there for the day or two that they would stay. So people will come in and ride and then go home or go to Carter and Caverns or wherever. So that's already happening and that will continue to happen whether we uphold this decision or not.
Okay, so they're going to continue to have their commercial use, but it will not be able to offer tent sites or RV hookups for rent?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
So I have a comment and I'm, I'm not confused about this, but the homes, first of all, the homes are allowed for lodgers. So if they had the two homes on each property, which, no, we have that many yet, but they could do like a vacation rental or rent those out just fine. It's just the RVs. And then according to our, you can live in an RV on a property, one RV, less than six months, correct?
Correct.
So, but that would mean they couldn't rent that RV?
Correct.
Okay, they would just, okay, so that's kind of confusing because I know that's happening. So I wonder about that in itself. Also, I have friends that belong to a travel club, just a homeowners, RVers, travel club. And sometimes they have four or five people on their property for the night. I don't know if they're free. It's called Freelancer, Freeloader, Free something. So there's a free in the word if I recall right, but I don't know if they actually stay on their property for free. But they do, they just sign up online and people are coming through Wilcox and they're like, hey, you know, we need a place to stay tonight. We couldn't get into the RV park. And they say, come on out. And sometimes they have three or four RVs there and they have a little campfire set up and stuff. So what's, you know, I think we're, I think we're literally are trying to control something that shouldn't be controlled at an allowable level. And what is, so now is my question. How many RVs and campsites are they going to have on these two properties with multiple homes on them?
I believe if this appeal is approved, it was limited to no more than four RV sites. And they were also limited to no more temporary use. So it can't be long-term RV use, which is typical for RV parks. So up to six months per year per occupant. And then up to two tent camping sites on the northern parcel.
Did you say ten?
They're a parcel, they're on both persons.
The RV would specifically be on a southern parcel. I'll pull up a map.
So there could be six families at the most living on individuals or families living on that 10 acres at one time.
Well, so each site has 10 acres. It's RU4. So you could have two houses on each of those. And whether they live there permanently or temporarily, it's up to them. If this appeal is approved, they could also have two camping sites. And they could have an additional, they could have four temporary occupancy RV slots for rent.
Okay, well.
So we would be allowing 10 more camping sites and four approved rentals.
Two tents camping sites.
Two tents.
Two.
Or RVs.
And four RVs.
For the whole 20 acres.
Yes.
Okay. All right, it's, I do have, I don't know if it's going to be a question or I even should ask it. But two of the issues that alarm me are the road. It seems like it bothers everybody. One way that they solve that, like when you get up into two camping in the place, Cochise Stronghold, is the road is hard to see around this big rock. So you go to the right of the rock when you go in and you go to the other side, you know, the right again when you come out. On those hills, if there were room to do that, and maybe they could make it two ways so that you split up and you go to the right. I mean, there's a way to make that safe and I think that definitely they should be, the, Sirota should be responsible to kind of make that safe. I don't see that there's additional traffic created by the RVs themselves or the tent campers. But I do see that there's an issue, everybody mentioned it, with ATVs on the roads. And that is happening everywhere. Is there a way that can be controlled and not be something that's aggravating to all the neighbors?
I really, if there was a request for an RV rental business or some kind of application for us to tie it to.
Yeah, we can.
But most of these are just.
So it sounds like the ATVs aren't necessarily on Sirota's property. Like they might be other neighbors or other people just going parking and driving down to the river because it's right on the river. So I, you know, that's not part of this decision because ATVs don't really match up. I just wanted to say that. That sounds like one of the big problems. So.
Maybe, is there a connection between the ATVs and the camping sites?
No, not listed on the application as something that was integral.
Do they rent ATVs at their camping sites?
Yeah.
They could potentially.
Seems like that's what she's asking. Are ATVs coming from Sirota's or from someplace else?
Yeah. It's tough. It wasn't, it was neither asked about on the application and maybe it's something we add to our application.
I'm just simply clarifying what I thought she was asking.
Yeah, their property touches just on a corner. So there can't be really a road from one property to the other. But if the ATVs have a way to just like go out a small gate and get right on the other property rather than have to go around on the road. Do you have that? Okay, so, all right. Another question is access to the river. Another thing that was talked about today that is definitely affected by people staying there because they want to go down to the river at all hours of the day and night, not just on rides, I guess. Or is the river right on their property?
The river is.
Are they even going to the river to ride? No, okay. They're on the roads. They're riding on the roads and that doesn't help. That doesn't matter and riding doesn't matter. I just can't see how having that limited amount of RVs and things on the property, how would we regulate that? How would we know they're doing that? Or is there, if they don't get permits and do it anyway, how do we know?
For the, for the RV usage?
Yep. How are we going to regulate that?
We don't regulate. I mean, any person.
It's regulated by the Sheriff.
Just thinking. I have other questions, but they aren't related at all. So I don't even know how to go there. Sorry.
Any other?
No ma'am.
Questions or comments? I did have an email that indicated that one of the planning and zoning people was going to be present today, Kim Depew. I also noticed that there was no comment of why they voted for or against. And so those are things that we normally look at, you know, in order to help make a decision of why, why the decision was made. So that doesn't look like it's arbitrary or capricious. Would it be inappropriate for me to ask Ms. Depew if she had comments? Or do her comments have to stay with the Planning and Zoning Commission? I don't know how she voted, so I have no.
That's hard too. We don't know.
Yeah, that's information outside of the record that was given to the board to look at.
Well, we can't introduce new information, but my assumption was that if she heard something that was incorrect or that happened at the Planning and Zoning Commission, that she would have signed up to speak here. And I didn't see that, so I wanted to offer that opportunity, but obviously we'll keep it there. All right, so we have to decide right now on a sample motion. And as always, we need to make sure, because it's kind of an alternate universe when you're doing these kind of things of whether you vote for or against something.
Clarification, if the board approves the appeal, that means you're overturning the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Is that clear? Any more questions?
No.
Hey, I'm looking for a motion then. Wait, I'll close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, uh, you indicated that you'd give, uh, Mr. Sirota.
Yeah, Mr. Sirota, did you wish to rebut? I have here that you might want to have a few minutes to
And that's three minutes.
Really explain your position.
Madam Chair, it's three minutes for the rebuttal.
Thank you again for the time and sorry for the confusion. Um, while this particular comment of mine really has nothing to do with this, uh, actual, um, appeal, it, it goes more to the, our character and I want to address some of Tom's comments. Um, and maybe some other comments about that we are trespassing on private property. We do not. I greatly respect people's private property. Our route with our horses goes from our front gate across one of our properties, crossing an easement that we have access to to get out to Ocatillo Road where we then conduct 99% of our business on a Arizona State Land Trust permit where we ride on certain pre-approved trails. We do not ride on private property. We have great respect for private property. I would never do that. Second, um, there are three RV spots, not four. And one of them is mine, just parked there. Another one is a friend's, Neil Berger, who spoke. And there's one available for rent. We, we don't have an RV park. We don't want to run an RV park. We just, it's a way to bring people in to ride our horses. It's, it's a value added for us. We're not interested in becoming an RV park. This is really small. Uh, we're probably done till fall with having RVs in there. Um, I do want to address, I'm not aware of any head-on collisions. No one ever, as a guest that's been to our place, said that they've, they've had a head-on collision with any vehicle. I doubt that that's accurate with all due respect intended. Um, we are also concerned with traffic. The numbers I gave you, the average per day is, is correct. I have no reason to exaggerate that. Uh, we're small. We have three rides, sometimes two rides a day. How many cars can you have come in for horseback rides when you're doing that per day? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, we've heard a lot about the horse-riding business, which is already approved, so we have to remove that from our thinking about the decision. Because that's approved, you know, stamped, okay. What we have to realize is we only have a choice of allowing the Planning and Zoning Commission decision to move forward, which said, no, they could not have overnight camping or tent camping. I'm going to close the public hearing if you have no other questions or comments from anyone who could answer questions. All right?
Can I have a discussion, one more discussion?
Certainly, but let me close the public hearing and then you can, the public hearing was if you wanted to ask, you know, other questions.
Okay.
So, I'll close the public hearing and now certainly you may, um, uh, ask questions. You may, um, have discussions with us, long as it, long as it's about the camping, okay?
Madam Chair. Um, and I see this as just an item to bring out. I see this was basically created, the, the issue was created when the Sirota's wanted to put in a septic system to handle their RV and the friend's RV.
I don't know anything about a septic system.
Well, it seems that our recommendation was create, or our, our whole, the whole issue appeared to be created over them doing some work and then finding out that they couldn't rent the RV that they had there or have somebody bring one in, right? At some point. And it, and I, I find that it's almost like we forced them into having to go to all this trouble whenever it was just such a small amount, two tents and four RVs. It seems like a, a tiny little amount on 20 acres. And I, I don't feel necessarily responsible. It's just the way things are written and done in the county, but it's, I'm frustrated that they wanted to do a little improving on their property to make it comfortable and then we said, oh, no, sorry. You can't do that right here that way. And, um, so anyway, I'm just kind of torn because of that because I feel like we blocked someone from doing something that they would have done anyway. And we only knew about it because they got permits and everything to do things the right way and things together. And I, I just don't know what to think. So, I would, I really would like to make, I can't guarantee I'm going to vote for it. Yes, I'm still not sure, but I, yeah, I'm ready to make a motion if Mr. Crosby's ready.
I'm ready.
Okay. All right, so I move that we approve the Sirota Appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's February 8th, 2023 meeting, Denying of Special Use SU23-02, Siroto Guest Lodging. And that means, can you, can you let us know that?
Vice Chair, Judd?
Yeah.
It would be a little bit more appropriate if you could follow maybe the sample motion to get the wording exactly right.
He'd like to read.
Oh, read the one up there.
In the back of the form.
It's also right there in front of me. Madam Chairman, I move to approve docket SUA2301, reversing the February 8th, 2023 denial by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The factors in favor of the appeal approval constituting findings of fact. There's no second. May I make the other motion and see if I can make a second?
Here a second.
Because it depends on how we vote anyway. So, I'm going to make the other motion. Madam Chair, I move to deny docket SUA23-01, affirming the February 8th, 2023 approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The factors in favor of an appeal denial constituting findings of fact.
Second.
So, we now have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, indeed. I wrote down to deny the appeal is to affirm the denial of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And to my understanding, having spoken at length to Ms. McLaughlin, is that this is only about the special use of guest lodging.
Right. Any questions or comments from you?
Yeah, I had something till he said that. Now, okay. I just, I feel like we, um, we aren't changing very much by affirming or denying. I do know two things. I know it was a split decision at the, um, Planning and Zoning Meeting and I do know that our staff recommended to approve in Planning and Zoning, um, I mean, to, uh, and Planning and Zoning did not approve their, their, um, permit. So, I, it could be capricious and arbitrary and all those things, the decision. But I have a feeling that it was, you know, what we're deciding today based on that is it may make, it's going to make somebody unhappy. Difficult for me because it's in my district, but I, I just want to say I appreciate everybody for their efforts. So, before I make the vote.
I, I, I can make a, um, a brief comment on the fact of the, uh, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission is very important in order to be able to look at issues because they are members of the public that are selected from each district in order to look at issues and, and make recommendations to us. And we, uh, assume always that they take into consideration all the information that's brought to them. Um, so to overrule them, I would need to have some, uh, strong reasoning. And, um, and I don't believe I've heard that today, but the other thing I wanted to say is that when it comes to the board, we usually weigh heavily on the people who are going to be impacted by the decision that we're making. And in this case, it seems to be the, not the neighbor, but the neighborhood, you know, and, and the desire to, um, limit. Now, we know that, that, um, that's kind of a false security because when you buy your property, you don't know how many people are going to buy next to you or how many people are going to drive to town twice a day or any of those things. But the assumption is that when you offer guest lodging, that you will have more people coming into the neighborhood than you would otherwise, is my assumption. So, those are strictly my comments for the record. And if anyone else has comments before I call for the vote, I'd be glad to hear them.
I just reiterate, it says, uh, "The campsites and RV hookups meet our definition of guest lodging. Before that was offered, the applicant should have requested a special use permit. He claims he was unaware of that and I believe that completely."
Any other comments?
No ma'am.
All right, now remember, we, we have a motion. It's, it's always backward here. We have a motion that if you vote for, then you are denying. Okay?
That's correct. The motion was made to deny the appeal, which means you would be affirming or upholding the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Is that clear before you vote? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and so ordered. Now, we need to move on to the, um, out of the public hearings and to the Board of Supervisors. And I did ask, I did ask to, um, have this, um, be under my, um, auspices and, and in order to be able to read this, um, this proclamation. So, if I could have, uh, a motion from the floor, please?
Number eight, I move to approve a proclamation to declare May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. There is a proclamation that I think it's important to have in the record and for the public to hear on the proclamation declaring May as Mental Health Awareness Month, May 9th, 2023. Whereas nearly one in five adults and one in five adolescents in the United States live with a mental illness. And whereas mental health impacts a person's emotional, social, environmental, financial, and overall well-being with significant disparities among racially and ethnically diverse communities. And whereas suicide is now the second leading cause of death for 15 to 20-year-olds, 24-year-olds, with teenagers experiencing a 17.3 increase in the use of anxiety medications since 2010. Whereas one-third of the United States population lives in a county designated as a mental health professional shortage area. And whereas an estimated 44% of residents detained in jails are suffering from a mental illness, often with co-occurring substance use disorder. And whereas Cochise County and all counties serve as a safety net for residents in need, first responders, and operators of crisis lines and detention centers. And whereas Cochise County has dedicated American recovery funding to help our local federally qualified health center, Chiracoma Community Health Center, to build a behavioral health program. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed that the Cochise County Board of Supervisors declares May as Mental Health Awareness Month in Cochise County to highlight the critical role of the county in providing crucial behavioral health services and resources to its residents. And be it further proclaimed, the Cochise County Board of Supervisors continues its commitment to partner with our community members to ensure that all mental health services are accessible, valuable, and culturally appropriate for all residents. And hopefully to be approved and adopted the 9th of May, 2023. Having read that, if there are no comments, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and so orders. Thank you. I think it's a very important, important thing that's happening and we need to, to, um, make mention of that. Okay, next, uh, item number nine.
I'll take that one. I move we elect Madam Judd as Chairman of the Board of Supervisors effective within May 23rd, 2023 Regular Board of Supervisors Meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait, let me see, wait.
Oh, can I vote?
Madam Chair?
I have.
Yes, I believe there were some speakers on this.
That's what I say. I just remembered there are speakers here.
And. While you're looking for the speakers, can I just say I appreciate your solid leadership and your friendship over many, many years before I was even here at the board. And, um, I rather enjoyed being the chair once before and I'm excited to have that responsibility. Um, but I do not expect that I will do, I will be as solid as you are because I am not the kind of person you are, but I definitely do appreciate you. Now, we can have speakers.
Okay, um, I believe, uh, Karen Laney must be online. No?
Madam Chair, I believe she may have signed up, um, either in support of or opposition to.
Okay, not speaking, not speaking, opposed and not speaking. Sorry, I didn't see the yellow. And another one that is opposed and not speaking is Catherine Welch. Okay, I have another file here. Let me. Okay, item nine, speaking on teams, uh, Joanne Murphy. Are you available?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Okay, Joan Murphy, 1132 Quail Hollow Drive in Sierra Vista. I am opposed to electing another chair as both Tom Crosby and Peggy Judd don't seem to know proper order. In that they have violated open meeting laws and have complaints against them. Both have shown a disregard for meeting order in that they have brought supposed experts to meetings and have allowed them an inordinate amount of time to spout their conspiracy theories while restricting citizens to the normally allowed three minutes. I think that their, um, conduct during this meeting only, um, increases my resolve in this respect. And, um, there, I actually don't even wish them to be serving anymore on the board. I think that they have done a disservice to we constituents because they don't listen to counsel and have caused suits that are going to waste our taxpayer money, almost all the way up to $200,000. And that's all I have to say.
Uh, the next speaker is on teams and it's Jeff Sturgis.
Hi, Jeff Sturgis from Sierra Vista. Um, I, uh, was kind of baffled by this thing because it, on the agenda, it says elect blank as Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. Um, and now I find out that it is, uh, Supervisor Crosby, uh, putting forward this proposal. And, um, I have been, uh, a witness to Supervisor Judd turning down this position twice and using, um, reasons such as the health of her husband, et cetera, et cetera. And she actually, uh, said that she didn't want this position. Uh, but I will go on and say that, uh, I agree with the previous caller and, and saying that neither one of these supervisors deserve even to be on the board because I will continue with my list of what has happened and that is, uh, they've interfered with respected law-abiding this election officials, causing one lifetime Republican to resign who has since then, due to her superb qualification, accepted a position at the state level. They have ignored the illegal advice of our county attorney and his deputies. They ignored the legal advice of our Secretary of State's office. They promoted an illegal hand count of 100% of the ballots. Even though the machines were tested and certified, even though we do have partial randomly selected hand counts of ballots that are done under controlled and trustworthy circumstances. And even though full hand counts are notorious, notoriously flawed and time-consuming. They have, they violated multiple Arizona Title 16 statutes regarding elections. They violated our state's open meeting law many times. They would have excluded, that is disenfranchised, all county voters, more than 47,000 last. They would have excluded, that is disenfranchised, all county voters, more than 47,000 last, uh, election, 47,000. Uh, if not for Superior Court intervention. Uh, they are conspiracy theorists and election deniers. Uh, they have violated their oath of office. They have cost discounting nearly 200,000 in legal fees with the possibility of additional legal and monetary consequences leveled by the Arizona Attorney General. Neither one of these, uh, supervisors should even be supervisors, much less Chairman of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Uh, next is Allison Morris on teams. Are you there, Allison?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes, Allison.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Allison Morris. I'm from Portal, and I appreciate this opportunity to speak today. I think we all know what this agenda item from Supervisor Judd was all about. Removing Supervisor English's chair and replacing her with, well, now we know herself. Uh, let the record show that I am speaking on behalf of myself and 30 other concerned citizens from Districts 1, 2, and 3 in Cochise County. So a total of 31 people. We are all strongly opposed to this change. Supervisor English has done an outstanding job serving as chair, keeping order, following meeting rules, limiting discussions to specific agenda items, allowing the public to voice their opinions, and consulting with our county attorney when she has concerns. For all this and more, we are deeply grateful for the fine job Chair English has done since January 2021. We also recognize and respect her selfless hard work, serving as supervisor for a combined period of over 21 years. Because of her strong ethical values and commitment to the rule of law, Chair English was not incriminated in the lawsuits having to do with the proposed illegal 100% hand count of ballots or the other two lawsuits filed for refusal to canvass our election results. Chair English followed the advice of our county attorney and Secretary of State, thereby upholding the laws. Dear, uh, sorry, just, oh dear. Sorry, I just closed out of my speech. Oh dear. Well, um, let's have to wing it. Um, anyway, the, the point is, I just lost it. Um, thi- this is just outrageous that she's being replaced with Supervisor Judd, um, who has missed, has not been present for, in the contentious last quarter um, of 2022, she was absent 90%, uh, attending remotely but not physically present. Being a, a, a chair needs to have physical presence, and she has been gone, um, and joining remotely for, uh, at least 60% of just this year. But 90% or more in the last quarter of last year, which was, as everyone knows, because of elections, um, very contentious and crowds needed to be controlled. Um, Supervisor, excuse me, Chair English has one absence, um, and joined remotely maybe four times. Supervisor Crosby, um, gone six times absent and joining remotely, I don't know, 10, 20 times. I can't remember because I have all my notes in front of me. But Supervisor Judd, um, because of her physical absence, um, in addition to all the other violations and, um, uh, inappropriate behavior that the other two speakers have already mentioned, really should not be leading meetings. This is, I mean, it's kind of ridiculous, really. Someone who's willing to break the law, believes lies, and then further shares lies. Sorry.
Your time is up. The next person is, uh, Sandy Trull, and I believe in person.
Hello, this will be quick. I just want to voice my support for Peggy Judd for the next chairman. Uh, she's been attacked relentlessly, and all she's doing is trying to find the truth and support our constitution, and I definitely appreciate that. Thank you.
Item number. No, I'm checking to see if we have any more people that needed to speak because there's been.
A lot of.
Several lists on here. And I don't want later on, hey, I see no more for this item number nine. And so, um, I just make a, a comment. I, I appreciate the kind words from people. I recognize that, um, the chair always serves in any organization at the, um, at the will of the people that they are with. Uh, there are three of us, and if two people wish to have another person as chair, that's the way it is, and I accept that. So, uh, having said that, um, any other comments? And I'll call for the vote.
I, I do. Um, my husband is much improved. He has color. He gets around on his own. He's even driving again. And he stays home alone. Um, I, I insisted that he be able to do that before I could even take this role on. I didn't turn it down because I did not desire to be the chair, or I felt unqualified, um, in the past, as was mentioned. Um, I also do understand that as it, as it appears at this time, that Supervisor, um, Madam Chair English and myself are not planning on running again. And, um, so this is my chance to, to lead the board, which I adore. I love this county and I, we're, despite of our differences, are a good board and, and I want to be the chairman. And in a way, I don't think you guys realize how much work Mrs. English or Supervisor English does for us. My goodness, it's a lot of work to do that. So I needed to be able to take on that responsibility and attend again. So I have made this commitment as I vote today and accept this position as the chairman. I don't want anyone to think that I cannot do this at this time in my life. I can. And once again, I thank you. Thank you. And, um, Madam English for all that you have done. Thank you.
As I told Madam English at the start of this term, I hoped this term would be Madam English's best term, and I hope that, uh, you'll see it that way.
Have we voted?
No.
I think so.
Everybody now.
Well, instead, accepted, and I thought, uh, did we vote? And I forgot.
Oh.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous, and so ordered. Uh, item number, uh, 10.
Madam Chair, I move that we elect.
Wait, wait. That was number nine?
Yeah. They are, they look exactly the same.
Okay, um, can I read these two into the record? They're not speaking, or is that inappropriate?
Are they for item number 10 or number nine?
That's item number nine.
So we missed them when we were reading them earlier.
Missed the moment. Okay, sorry, people. There, there were two people that were, uh, opposed.
No, 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 Madam Chair, you can go ahead and read them in.
Well, we normally don't read the names anyway.
No.
Unless it's a public hearing.
We missed them when you were allowing, when you were reading and allowing people to speak. Is that what you're saying?
No, they did not wish to speak.
Oh, they didn't want to speak?
No.
Okay.
So two opposed.
All right. So we move on to item number 10.
Madam Chair, I move that we elect Tom Crosby as Vice Chairman of the Board of Supervisors effective with the May 23rd, 2023 Regular Board of Supervisors meeting.
Second.
Here we have a motion and a second. I have, um, opposed to on item number 10, which is the, the Vice Chair. On item number 10, speaking, I have 1, 2, 3. And we'll begin with Joanne Murphy.
Yes, I'm here again from Sierra Vista. And I am opposed to this, um, Vice Chair. Uh, we haven't had a Vice Chair, it doesn't appear, and we've done very well without him. I feel this is just a move to, um, how, make it even worse that, um, and in the words, the, um, serving chair right now, Ann English. I am opposed for the same reasons I mentioned before, that neither one of the other supervisors seem to be aware of proper procedure. And at times, either just don't care and do what they want. Whereas, uh, Chair Ann English has years of experience, performs the job well, and seeks information as needed from the county attorney and needs it, which is not what her colleagues do. Uh, I am opposed also for the reasons I stated before, that they have gone in opposition to the county attorney's, uh, information. They have not served the people of Cochise County well. They're wasting our tax money. Um, and although the recall effort was not successful, there were 4,300 people that signed, and that's not counting the very many other people in the Districts 2 and 3 that were unable to sign but are still negatively affected by the actions they have taken. There were many of them that were clamoring to sign. And with that, I thank you.
Uh, Jeff Sturgis, you have three minutes.
Yes, Jeff Sturgis from Sierra Vista, um. I, uh, I'm a very opposed to this. I'm opposed to, uh, the previous one also for the same reasons. Uh, but, um, this supervisor has cost this county nearly $200,000 in legal fees with the possibility of additional legal and monetary consequences levied by the Arizona Attorney General. Has gifted our entire county elections department to county recorder David Stevens, who helps lead conspiracy theorist Mark Fincham's so-called Election Integrity Group that continues to push false claims about election fraud. And yes, Stevens wants the voters of Arizona to trust him with running elections. And now, the same supervisors have gifted us by way of Stevens with a new elections director who's also an election denier. Yes, this guy, Bob Bartelsmeyer, with a sketchy employment pass, did not meet the requirements for the job, who failed to fill important parts of the job application form, who reminds the work of thousands of other election officials who certified the 2020 election, while now oversee the integrity of our Cochise County elections. These supervisors have burned bridges with our supervise, with the Sheriff's Department, is expected to continue to po- oppose our county rece- uh, receiving federal money that we are entitled to and that we desperately need for this rural area. What they want to eliminate the, or one of them, uh, the one that's being, uh, considered for this Vice Chair wants to eliminate the San Pedro Riparian National Conservation Area, even though tourists who visit it and Ramsey Canyon bring in $28 million a year and generate 590 jobs. He voted to not give, uh, 706 county employees a tiny pay increase to cover the cost of inflation, healthcare, vision, and dental benefits. Um, he also made it possible that our county will go bankrupt from its attorney fees. Yes, you need to know the reasons why thousands of registered voters in District 1 want their voices heard on why this supervisor should not be trusted to help govern Cochise County in any position. Hear their voices and know the facts that caused them to sign the recall petition. Let's end this calamity and stop this silly, uh, proposal to put this man as in Vice Chair position. Thank you.
Uh, Allison Morris.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning. I'm Allison Morris again from Portal, and I thank you again for this opportunity to speak. My comments are directed to Supervisor Crosby and Supervisor Judd. And to save time and embarrassment, I will not mention your names, but I think you will know to whom I am referring. First, I ask you both to please do your homework. If you are unfamiliar with terms that come up in the county's business, please look them up or ask someone who knows. Letters of constructive discharge arise when workers feel they have to leave due to intolerable work conditions. The letter does not have to specifically contain the words resign or resignation to mean just that. The term pro bono refers to work that is done on a voluntary basis. No fee is charged. These are uncompensated legal services. Brian Blem's work, for example, was not pro bono. He charged $10,000 that was paid by an undisclosed private party. If you sign a legal document in your official capacity, you need to know what you are signing. A writ of mandamus is when a judge issues a command to a government official to perform an act required by law. This is what was filed against you in the lawsuit regarding the illegal 100% hand count and later in the lawsuits regarding your refusal to canvass our election results. This is the same type of lawsuit you filed against Lisa Mara to compel her to participate in your plan that had already been deemed illegal by the court. My next comment has to do with attending meetings remotely. I would like to request that you please dress professionally as you would for meetings in person. It is totally inappropriate for the public to view parts of the body that would normally be covered by long pants. I am referring to what happened recently while someone was adjusting their computer's camera. This was an awkward and distracting moment, to say the very least. Finally, I ask that you show respect to everyone during your meetings. Making disparaging remarks, interrupting, and talking over other county officials shows a lack of decorum and should not be tolerated. Please stick to the topic on the agenda and demonstrate professionalism when you are warned of open meeting law violations. In summary, I ask that both of you take your responsibilities seriously. Do your homework, follow the rules, and act and dress professionally. I trust you will consider these issues and hope that you will strive to raise the bar going forward in your roles as county supervisors. Needless to say, I am totally opposed to either of you holding the position of Chair and Vice Chair. You should not even be a supervisor and governing this county. Thank you.
Okay, that's all the speaker request forms that I had. We have, uh, a motion on the floor. We have a second. Any other comments from the board? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous, and so ordered. We now move to item number 11, before we all pass out from having your food. But the public has spoken, so, all right, item number 11. Kathy.
Madame Chair, I move that we approve the recommendation of the County Treasurer for the abatement of property taxes and interest on personal property and the removal of personal property tax liens on treasurer's certificate of clearance number 2023-070 to 2023-141.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. So are you getting to the end of these?
I'm ever hopeful, ever hopeful. And, and I'm truly sorry that I didn't hold these for another board meeting period because this is a record. I have 72 of them this time. And, um, Deputy Estrada is, is working solo right now, so, um, he is really, he became the employee of the quarter at the Sheriff's Office during this last, um, award season, and so I'm very proud of him too. He's done a great job. But yes, we have 72 of them. Some of them go back clear to 2,000. And the total amount that we would be abating is $105,923.98.
And we'll get them off of the books, so.
Off forever.
Don't have to worry about that. Um, we have a motion and a second. Any comments before I call for the vote?
Not at this time, thank you.
Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous, and so ordered. Thanks, Kathy.
Thanks so much.
Um, Mr. Maraz, if you'll come forward while we get a motion here.
Madam Chair, I move we approve Project M21-4621, a change order to previously approved Contract 21-15-FAC-01 with Pueblo Mechanical and Controls, Inc. for the demolition of an existing 800 amp multiple distribution panel, MDP, and the installation of a new 800 amp MDP at 100 Quality Hill in Bisbee in the amount of $33,031.26 effective May 9th, 2023.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Why do we need this, Henry?
In short, because the, uh, the one that's currently there and in existent, uh, in existence, they are very, very large breakers. They go to the, the smaller sub panels and different floors. And those breakers, uh, if we ever, if they trip or we ever turn them off, we probably not going to be able to flip them back on, so. They're old. We can't, we can't buy them, and, uh, they're not manufactured anymore, so.
Good. Any other questions from Mr. Maraz? Any other questions from Mr. Maraz?
How old are they?
I think, I want to say that these are prob, they're probably from back in the late 60s. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Henry. If not, I'll call for the vote then. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered.
Thank you.
All right, the Health Department. Suzanne, would you come forward while we're getting a motion on the floor, please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the addition of two position control numbers, PCN, for two new full-time grant-funded community health worker, CHW, positions to be added to the overdose prevention program effective upon board approval.
Second. There are motion and a second.
Good afternoon. The overdose prevention contract, CTR063847, was recently accepted by Board of Supervisors on February 21, 2023. One of the objectives of this grant is to increase linkages to care to increase access to opioid treatment services. Cochise County Health and Social Services Administration met with Rich Karwatska to discuss moving the current linkages to care program in-house. To do this, it will require two full-time community health workers positions to provide peer navigation and transportation services. In addition to Mr. Karwatska's approval of bringing this service in-house, it has also been discussed with and approved by our county risk management and the contractor, Arizona Department of Health Services. It would be more cost-effective and efficient to provide this service in-house. I, we respectfully request your approvals.
Any comments, questions?
I have a question. So who was, who were the two health workers? Who was managing that prior?
So these, we're asking for the two new positions. We don't have any of.
All right. So when you say move it in-house, I wondered what out house, out of the house looked like.
We are currently contracted with an outside organization, and we're wishing to bring that in-house.
All right.
Can you describe that peer navigation position as you were kind enough to refer to me and email later, earlier this week?
Sure. So this position would provide recently incarcerated, recently released incarcerated people to the, the, this position would provide transportation services from the jail to their home to a treatment facility and/or to AA meetings after they were released. AA meetings, doctor's appointments, probation appointments, grocery stores, DES appointments, services that would provide a more successful life after incarceration.
Are AA meetings or the equivalent required under this program?
They're not required. They're just services that we would provide to them.
I see. And is, is abuse testing part of the program?
Um, that hasn't been implemented as of yet.
Okay, because I was a house parent in a California Youth Authority facility, and I had to do periodic tests on the attendees or whatever. They weren't inmates, but that'd probably be a good idea to see if it's working or not, right? Or they're.
Well, this isn't really an addition, addiction program. It's more of a service that were required by the state under this contract to just provide resources. So it's the transportation and the other resources to appointments that I just mentioned.
Okay. What about measures of success for this program? Which is another topic that I believe that we emailed back and forth a little bit about.
Correct. I don't have measures of success right now. This is a fairly new program. The contractor that we've been contracted with has only been in place for a little over a year. So this is still a work in progress.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Anything else? I'll call for the vote then. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, unanimous, and we get two new grant-funded positions. Next one, could I have a motion while Caleb is coming up with Program Manager?
Madam Chair, I move we approve Amendment 6 to intergovernmental agreement, IGA CTR040363, Women, Infants, and Children, WIC Services, and the Breastfeeding Peer Counseling Services, BFPC Program between the Arizona Department of Health Services, ADHS, and the Cochise Health and Social Services effective upon approval through September 30, 2023 in the amount of $669,803 for WIC and $63,824 for BFPC.
I'll second it.
Here we have a motion and a second. You have any further information, Boris?
Yes, good afternoon. The approval of the ADHS contract, IGA number CTR040363, Amendment 6, WIC, Women, Infants, and Children and Breastfeeding Peer Counseling, Counselor, BFPC Program between the Arizona Department of Health Services, ADHS, and Cochise County Health and Social Services effective upon BOS approval through September 30, 2023 in the amount of $669,803 for WIC and $63,824 for BFPC. The amendment was approved by BOS August 30, 2022. Services under Amendment 6 will remain the same. However, our county WIC program is receiving an increase of $25,110. The increase in funding is due to above satisfactory caseload performance for the first part of the fiscal year 2023. ADHS requires ninety-six, sorry, 97% performance for caseload to fulfill the contract. The original Cochise County WIC program contracted caseload was 3,060 participants served monthly. From October 2022 to March 2023, the Cochise County WIC program averaged 3,191 participants served monthly or 104% performance. IGA number CTR040363, Amendment 6, is based on a monthly caseload of 3,180, sorry, 3,185 pregnant women, postpartum women, infants, and children of age five. The increase in budget will allow us to continue providing effective services and return to the BOS to request a retention payment for the WIC staff. Your approvals are respectfully requested and sending the signed IGA to Suzanne Hagel of Prevention Services.
Any questions or comments? I would comment. The WIC program seems to get better every year, so thank you.
Thank you.
Does a lot of good work and serves a lot of deserving people, so thank you. Any questions or comments?
None at this time, thank you, Bill.
I just, I have one. The 669,000, is that staffing and, and working with the clients? Or does that pay for the actual food? Because the food is so much more expensive now, and I was wondering if that's related.
That's a good question. So that 669,000, that is for operations. The other funding that goes towards the nutrition supplement assistance, that's covered on the state end, so they have that worked out on the state side.
So they have to figure out where the extra money comes from, not us.
Yes, that's, that's coming from USDA.
I didn't want there to be a cutback. I mean, I, the numbers grew and I, I didn't.
And so ordered. Thank you, Caleb. Okay, state and federal legislation. You all saw that there's a draft budget at the state. That's all I have to, to report on then. Richard Karwatska, you have, please say no.
I do, I do, unfortunately, and I'll try to be, I try to be quick. So we have the jail district. The election is May 16, which is a week from today. So a week from today, there are three drop, if you wanted to drop off your ballot or replacement ballot locations. That is the Sierra Vista, the Foothills location, Wilcox, and our service center, and here at the Recorder's Office in Bisbee. Also, just coincidentally, May 7 through the 13th is Correctional Officer Week. So if you know a correctional officer and with his or her consent, give him a hug.
Okay. Current events, District One.
I've been a correctional officer, but not anymore. But regarding the, the jail district election, I spoke with our recorder yesterday who informed me that there has been approximately 19,500 ballots turned in. 2,178 as turned in in one day, which was yesterday, and 8,500 tabulated as of yesterday.
Good. District Two, I have a couple of things. One of them is Douglas Days this weekend, I mean Friday and Saturday, where they celebrate being Douglas. And the other is a sad note, but I think it's important to mention. One of our former, just to the piece, Barbara Welker has passed away, and she was, until probably a month ago, occasionally come to our meetings in her 90s because she cared so much about the county. So I wanted to mention that so that you would know that one of our, one of our pioneer workers, you know, has, has passed, but she always felt good about the county. District Three.
I'm just going to say Wine Festival. For those who are interested, look it up.
Okay, it says the next meeting is at 1 o'clock, but couldn't we have like a 30-minute break or something so we can eat and drink? I mean, we've got back-to-back meetings all afternoon.
Yes, you give notice to start the 1:05 meeting. So you want to start the meeting, 1:05 meeting?
That'd be fine. I think we need at least 30 minutes, you know, to wind down.
It's mental health, man.
Eat and go to the restroom. Okay, so I'm going to announce then that the meeting that we had in the conference room scheduled for 1 o'clock will start at 1:15, and it's the Public Works Department. So if someone would give them a call and let them know. Meeting adjourned.